Okay, good morning. I'd like to call the meeting to order. It's 8:01. And if we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
My pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
For me, I think it's appropriate to acknowledge what happened in Las Vegas this morning. And I think that we need to send all of our well wishes and if you have religious beliefs, prayers to Las Vegas. It's very heartbreaking what's happening in our country. I think it's very heartbreaking what's happening in our own county and the division that's going on. We have a left side of a room usually and a right side of the room, and I truly hope this comes to an end and we can pull our county back together. It's sad. So this morning, we are going to continue where we left off on Friday. We're going to continue deliberating now over the dispensaries, Chapter 17.91. We completed public comment over at the town hall Friday afternoon. So, not sure how you guys want to take this. If you have certain notes that you want to go over on the dispensaries, Commissioner Wooster, we can start at your end of the table and work back this way if that's what you'd like to do.
If I could make a suggestion, there are two issues that sort of override everything before we get started on the actual text. There has been public comment in support of a ban of dispensaries, and perhaps we ought to get a sense of the commission whether that's where it thinks we should go. And the other sort of overriding issue is should the dispensary ordinance be expanded to permit recreational use as well? And on those two issues, I would have two sub-questions of the planning director, which would be, would an EIR be necessary under either of those alternatives? Which might influence people's thinking about whether they're really realistic.
I don't know why I'd go as far as saying an EIR is required. I would have to consider and discuss with council just what level of environmental review would be required in either of those cases. It may be that exemption is still appropriate. Just caught me off guard here, so I don't really know the answer to the question, but I would want to discuss it with county council and just see what would be the best course of action on something like that.
Well, what caused me a little concern was we apparently needed an EIR to ban commercial cultivation, and if we were going to ban a dispensary, what would be the difference?
Well, I think just the unique circumstances of starting off the process with a regulatory ordinance necessitated the EIR. In midstream, when the board said that they preferred to go with the alternative of a ban, we determined that it would be prudent to continue with the EIR so that that opportunity for someone to sue us over not doing an EIR for whatever ordinance was ultimately adopted would be foreclosed. So, it could be arguable that a ban by itself would not need an EIR, but given the circumstances leading up to this point, the board felt, and we agreed, that continuing with the EIR process was the prudent course of action.
Well, then maybe we should just get a sense of the commission, quite apart from the EIR question, whether the majority thinks a ban is in order or not.
We'll start with you.
My own view is not.
Can I ask a question first?
Yes.
And that is, I understood the board had given us directions to come back with a ban ordinance or something to that effect. Did they also specify something about the dispensaries?
They did not.
So how did we get this dispensary ordinance?
This was brought to, I think Commissioner Wooster suggested, recommended that we bring this back since they're intricately linked. We also have the need to conform our ordinance with state law. And so, at direction of the commission, I think it was on August 10th, we were asked to bring this back. On August 24th, we came back, county council asked for clarification on the directive, and so that's why it's before you.
I had asked for it to come back as well because I felt that there were some issues on Prop 64 that weren't being dealt with that pertains to the ordinances. And although the supervisors did not ask us to review it, January of 2018 is right around the corner, and I felt that it would be prudent for us to say, here's how we feel about it, and they can take whatever they want that we give them and throw everything else out. They don't even have to look at what we do, but I felt it was important that we do this. We're just a recommendation.
When will county council get here?
Any moment, I hope, but I don't know that we would necessarily want to or are prepared to sort of discuss it in open session as far as what the legal ramifications are as far as the SEQA concerns are. Clearly, there is a need to bring our ordinance into compliance with state law. And there's many options we could go. You could do a complete ban, or we could expand it to include recreational use, and somewhere anywhere in between. So, the question is, if we do something other than what was just recommended by staff, would we require additional SEQA review? I'm not prepared to answer that question. I would need to look at the potential impacts, if any, and whether or not an exemption would still apply.
I'd like to sit down.
Do you have anything more?
I'm not terribly in favor of outright ban. I do agree there's probably some excessive issuance of prescriptions and that sort of thing. I'm not quite sure we can address it.
I think our main proper function today, I mean, not that we're bound by this, is to give the board the updated version, what's required under state law. I mean, and I think county council, I wish you were here just to hear the praise. I think that she did a, and you, Peter, did a wonderful job of bringing in all these new statutes and trying to make it conform to what we have. I think we should give the board basically a status quo thing. I think we could consider whether or not, especially, I'll ask the question first. Do we know for sure that none of the current dispensaries are cultivating?
I believe that there are, there's at least two that do some level of cultivation.
Okay. It was interesting. Of course, we didn't get any public comment from the actual dispensaries, so we don't have all the facts here.
But you did receive the email from the owner of the Little Trees dispensary up in Arnold, but we did not hear from either of the other ones.
And that's another question I have, is where are these? We have three?
Three, yes. One in Arnold, there's one just around the corner here next to DMV, and one across the highway on Angels Road, sort of directly opposite where Mountain Ranch comes in.
Oh, okay, so two in?
Two in San Andreas, one in Arnold.
I think basically we ought to try to get the ordinance up to date with what the current, what the situation was under the existing ordinance, and present that to the board and let them give us any direction that they feel they need. I do think that since the ban ordinance was drafted, recognizing the dispensaries, there'd be a lot of housekeeping to go back and change all the references to the dispensary ordinance. And I think it's just more appropriate for us to give the updated status quo to the board and let the board decide whether it wants to do anything further, because of course, they can update the statute, and then at least we'll be talking the same language that the state is, and then the board can give us direction, deciding which way they want to go on the commercial cultivation, and then we could work from there. But I think doing either, permitting either recreational cannabis sales or banning it at this point is basically, is not what the board has asked us to do, and I think we ought to just update things to be consistent with the state law.
So, I have one ban and three. Go ahead and work on it, is that correct? I will tell you what my concerns were. First of all, when we talk about commercial growing, it's not a permitted right in this county. It's a registration. There's two different creatures here. The dispensaries are a permitted right. They have been since 2005.
Yes.
All of this was done by the previous board of supervisors, not the current board. But to put a ban on a permitted right is going to get this county, according to the emails and the litigation that they all want to throw at everything, I believe since it's a permitted right, it's going to put this county in a whole lot of trouble. Did I approve of the dispensaries when they came in? No, I did not. Did I want them? No, I did not. I actually was very vocal about not wanting dispensaries in this county. Didn't have a choice because obviously I'm not a supervisor, and that was done years ago. Kind of the same thing with commercial. Didn't want it. Sat here as a planning commissioner, worked on a recommendation to the board of supervisors without being asked. We were not asked to work on that, but we did. And the supervisors at that time were leaning towards regulating, and I mean really regulating. So as a commissioner, my preference would have been to ban, period. But I didn't have an option for that to happen with the current, to the supervisors that were in place at that time. I spoke with several of them. I said, please, don't do this. Well, they were going to do it. So my suggestion was, if you're going to do it, don't allow it in residential neighborhoods. Do it in manufactured zones. I went on the record, read that into the record. Did I say, let's do a ban? No, because I knew that was a waste of my effort. I said, let's put it into manufactured zoning. Well, when it got to the supervisors, just so you're prepared that this could happen again, we weren't asked to work on an ordinance for them, so they never even looked at it. They never talked about it. They didn't touch it. They did what they wanted to do, and that's their right. They have the vote, we get a recommendation. So I know we're going to be spending day three here working on recommendations to the board of supervisors. I don't want you all to be disappointed if they don't even look at it because that's their right. I think that being that the dispensaries are now a permitted right, if the board of supervisors choose to ban them, that's their choice. They're the ones that will live with dealing with the litigation. Do I think that there needs to be some cleanup on dispensaries? Absolutely, I do. Am I worried about Prop 64? I am. It has changed the culture of our county. It's changed how we're going to look at regulating. It has changed how we're going to look at dispensaries. It has changed how, if we get rid of commercial growing, we still have Prop 64. They're still going to grow six plants. Did we make a move to say, if you're in a residential neighborhood, put it inside? Yeah, we did. Are there a lot of people that use recreationally, and is there a lot of people that use medicinally? You bet there are. They're either, if they don't have a dispensary to grow to or go to to get their product, they're going to grow it. That's going to put six plants in every backyard that wants it. It's no longer, get it out of my county. It doesn't work like that anymore. Prop 64 changed everything. This county voted no on Prop 64. They didn't want recreational in this county, but the state overruled us, so we don't have a choice but to live with it. I feel that by keeping the dispensaries, maybe less people will grow, and they'll have a place to go that's safe to buy their product, whether they're using it medicinally or commercially, or recreationally, excuse me. Prop 64, also, when you look at dispensaries, it allows for micro businesses. Right now, we have medicinal dispensaries only. We don't have recreational dispensaries. But Prop 64 says that if you want to open a recreational dispensary, all you need is a state license unless your county says you need a county license. So we are wide open to dispensaries based on you only need a state license, not a county license. Unless we put something in the ordinance that says you are not going to open 100 micro businesses in our county, and we address it, and the supervisors address it, we could be hit with as many micro businesses as possible. I believe it needs to be dealt with. Prop 64 created a whole new creature for us, and we have to deal with it. Am I happy? No. But do I have to second guess what a supervisor's going to do and try and take the best possible position that I think I could get them to work with? You bet I do. So that's where I'm at. I am definitely for working on this, sending something up to the supervisors. They don't have to like what we do, they can throw us out, but at least we can sit here and say, we did our job. They get to do what they want with it after that. So I think we need to work on it. We definitely have three votes to work on it. And Julie, we're glad to see you here because the commissioners had some legal questions for you that they would like answered before we do any work on this.
I was waiting at the other building. Sorry. Yes.
Why are you looking at me?
Because I got your email.
Commissioner Pacelli is asking questions as well.
Yeah, and that email happened to leave out a rather key word, not.
Okay.
Like there. We're now requiring the dispensaries to not be in business for profit.
Well, so before, a for-profit business was not allowed until the state legalized more recently the commercial uses. And so, looking, it appeared to me that the intent at the time was simply to make sure that the ordinance was in compliance with state law as it was then. Now that collective patient nonprofit model, the old one, will be sunsetted January 1st, 2019. And it's not that a company can't be nonprofit, but that's a separate, I mean, that would be its own choice. There will be-
But that seems to, under the statute, under the BNP code section, it looks as if nonprofits are looked at as rather suspect. I mean, if the state, if the state wants to, I mean, the state itself is studying whether it'd be appropriate to have them be nonprofits.
That's correct. That's correct.
And if we want to have them be nonprofits, we have to take different steps. If we do nothing and they happen to be nonprofits, that's where I'm kind of wondering, is do we have to deal with the nonprofit or for-profit issue at this point?
Well, the state won't, they'll have to, I think the state licensing scheme will look at what kind of business they have and determine if it's appropriate for state licensure. So unless we want to do something other, in addition to what the state has already done to restrict the types of businesses that can come in, there's also another type of business that's been created, a corporate type of business. It's a cooperative, I think, association or some type of cooperative, but it's a much different structure than it was before. There would be no need for the county to, unless it had concerns about particular business models that the state's allowing, to further restrict it.
Yeah, so basically, I think, if we're looking at the proposed ordinance as being an update, it's not that it has to, the only reason it was nonprofit before was because originally that's what was required.
Right.
And now that's not required, and-
Right.
So we don't have to have something in the current ordinance saying it's nonprofit. And if we do, then we probably have to take additional steps under the BNP code.
The state's going to assume or is going to presume a for-profit business in its modeling right now, and so, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Now, I have some additional questions just to really form a basis for my-
Okay, I'm going to stop you real quick because Commissioner Pacelli had questions regarding even discussing it.
Sure.
So I want to get to those questions.
Sure.
I wasn't aware my questioning was that severe. I was simply trying to find out how we had, how we got this part of the project. I thought that the request from the supervisors was limited to the cultivation aspect, but-
This commission-
She's already-
Oh, okay.
But I thought you were asking a SEQA question if we did this, if we, was that, that was Commissioner Wooster, apologies.
I can't spell SEQA.
I keep looking for the U in there.
Do you want to still ask your question, or do you think Peter's satisfied?
Well, the question was whether a SEQA analysis would have to be done, whether the commission or the county to try to institute a ban at this point, and would a SEQA analysis have to be done, and if so, what? Were the county to try to broaden dispensary ordinance to include recreational sales?
Were dispensaries included in the EIR analysis?
There was no analysis in the EIR of changes to the dispensary ordinance that would either expand it to recreational use or restrict it to a ban, so it was not, has not been analyzed.
So we would need to look at what environmental-
Yeah, we need to look to see if there are potential environmental effects associated with either course of action, and then prepare the appropriate document, whatever it might be.
I do think that maybe your suggestion that we take a poll at this point might have solved those questions for now. I mean, I understand that there isn't, at this point, there isn't a majority of the board that is either interested in today doing a ban of dispensaries or today enlarging things to include recreational dispensaries of recreational cannabis. So maybe right now, we don't have those EIR questions hanging before us. Is that your reading?
I think that's true with respect to a ban. I don't know that we had a poll with respect to expanding as to recreational.
Shall we do that until we don't have to worry about the EIR?
Okay, and I would not be in favor of expanding it. I think the voters spoke when they rejected Prop 64 in this county, that they don't want recreational here. I don't think it would be appropriate to institute dispensaries having the ability to sell recreationally.
I agree with recreational.
I as well, I agree.
I certainly agree that today is not the time to do that. And if the board decides that it wants to include recreational sales at dispensaries, it can do that.
Okay.
Get you off the hook as far as the EIR for today. But I do have some other questions. Just since I'm District 2, are there any parcels, zone CP in District 2? I just don't know.
I had printed up a map at one point in time, two years ago when we were working on this, and I had highlighted the CP, and I think there was like one little teeny tiny speck in there that was CP District 2.
I just carried it.
Want to rezone your house?
No, thank you. And so, as I understand it, under, since there's been a major shift, the state is looking at dispensaries. In fact, if you look up the word dispensary in the latest overall state statute, I think there's only one section that actually uses the word dispensary. They're talking about retail sales. Did I miss a whole section, a whole area?
No, they're now, dispensary licenses are not dispensary licenses, they're medical cannabis retailer licenses.
Yeah, right. And as far as cultivation goes, why now they're just, they would yet, if we are continuing to require it to be indoor cultivation, they just need to get one of the state licenses for indoor cultivation. But as I understand it, we could require a certain type of license, but then also superimpose on that a square footage limitation, less than the maximum amount under that license. Is that?
So there's two options. The way that I am reading malcursa, if you had just a medical cannabis retailer license, you would have to separately get a cultivation license, and the cultivation would have to be on a different premises. And as we learned last week, premises could be on the same parcel, but it wouldn't be in the same structure. Another option is a micro business license that allows both cultivate, a type 12 license that allows both cultivation and retail sales, as well as the state defaults, it also allows manufacturing and distribution. So if we didn't want to allow those other two things, we could allow a micro business license and simply prohibit the, certain activities that the state would otherwise allow. And that would allow it on the same premises. That's how I'm reading the state law.
But we could limit the square footage of cultivation-
Yes.
To be less than what the cultivation license maximum-
That's correct.
That they're putting in. Okay, great. And currently, it's my understanding that dispensaries don't have to get any further approval to actually start cultivation than what they already have. Is that correct?
Well, under state law, I would be-
I meant under, or- Under our current code, they can cultivate within the confines of the structure in which they're approved. I think it was up to 99 plants per patient, but it's clearly not the capacity to do that within at least of the three dispensaries we have. They're small structures, there's, you know, they maybe have room for, you know, 100 plants or so, but that's about it, you know, smaller plants. They, you know, they do not have a cultivation facility on site.
And let's get a little clarification then. I mean, what county council stated was quite clear, but I may not be clear on it. If we were, well, does the proposed ordinance, I can't remember right now, have anything about limits of cultivation in it? Or the option to cultivate?
It has, it has some limits, but then there's also the caveat that if a physician's recommendation says that a patient needs more than those limits, there is an ability there to grow, there is a loophole there where they could grow quite a bit, they could grow as much per patient as the physician allows.
And that's in the proposed ordinance?
That's in the existing dispensary.
No, no, I'm asking about the proposed ordinance. What if, I'm wondering whether we have to do anything about cultivation right now, because it sounds as if the state is going to take care of some limitations, particularly if it's required to be not on the same premises. I just don't know how much today we have to worry about in this, in our updating to deal with cultivation.
I'm reviewing the ordinance right now just to see where that's addressed.
Well, I think it's dealt with in 17.91.04- Well, I think it's dealt with in 17.91.040F where it describes the permissible licenses. And it's, that's the point, I think, at which they, we'd have to decide how much cultivation would be allowed and by specifying which licenses would, would be acceptable. And then if there's going to be additional square footage limitations, you have to put it in someplace and probably there.
Mm-hmm.
And I actually think the existing dispensary ordinance, it says if you cultivate on the premises, you're limited to six mature plants or 12 immature plants and per patient. It doesn't exactly come out and say that you have to be cultivating on your dispensary premises. So I think this needs to be fixed.
Yeah. To, so just to be clear, the, I think one of the dispensaries has a separate cultivation registration that they grow offsite. That's under the urgency ordinance registration procedure. They're not cultivating, you know, large quantities onsite. Uh, that would be the same case here except under the type 12 license. And we could certainly put a, limit a cap on that. Just so we're all on the same, you know, Julie mentioned the fact that we could limit other activities under the 12 license. Both the manufacturing and distribution are prohibited under 070 N and O under the draft ordinance. So we've already got that written into the code that it would only be for cultivation for sale onsite if cultivation would be allowed.
So, okay, so, uh, 040F. Well, I guess I'm going to get back to the, the question I had about the, on the premises. I mean, the, what, I think I'm just going to have to ask you to restate what you were saying as far as what, if we're dealing with the dispensary actually cultivating without having a separate, oop, separate cultivation license, uh, if they're going to do it on what I consider within the same building, is the only license type they could use is the type 12, the microbusiness?
That's how I'm reading Malcursa right now. The state, the VMP code was saying, or it might have been the Health and Safety Code, but what I saw under Malcursa was you can, this, you can have the same entity or person having multiple state licenses as long as those activities are done on separate premises, premises being defined as whatever portion of land is being used and licensed under the state. So when you, when you apply to the state, you don't necessarily have to give your full APN. You describe the premises that you're going to be growing on. The state does its research and issues a, a license that is specific not just to the person, but to certain premises. And again, but it doesn't define premises as being parcels or based on law lines. And now, unlike the prior law, you don't, you can now have some cross pollination where you have the same entity or person having also a different license with a different, allowing a different activity, but only one activity per premises. So if there was a parcel that had a dispensary premises that's indoor and a cultivation site with a cultivation license outdoors on the same parcel, that theoretically could happen without the county adding additional restrictions. To do it on the same premises, as far as I can see, um, and again, we haven't had any cases trying to interpret Malcursa yet, but it appears that the microbusiness license is the only way to allow multiple license activities to take place on a single premises.
Yeah, and, and you suggested the other day that the draft has, I guess, your proposed draft has been amended so that parcel in, in subsection F is changed to premises.
Right. Because otherwise it wasn't, it wouldn't comply.
And then, but then when the draft talks about separate and current state indoor medical cannabis cultivation license, that separate is not necessarily physically separate. It's just that you also need such a license.
Let me just read what I, let me read the section again.
Sure, yeah. By the way, you missed praise for the job you did on this draft.
I, I know that I, at the last minute, the parcel and premises piece, I, I realized I had used some terms incorrectly. So let me just quickly take a look here.
Sure.
I'm now debating whether it should be premises or parcel. I probably should go back. I probably should, I probably got it right the first time.
Okay.
And go back to parcel. And just with, with the understanding that to the extent that it's going to be on the same premises, they would need a type 12, and that's if we allowed it.
On the same, for premises.
On the same premises, yeah. No, I, I think it should go back to parcel.
Parcel.
Sorry for the confusion.
But then are you suggesting that these, these other licenses, this separate and current state indoor medical cannabis cultivation license, that could be on the same parcel?
Parcel, but not premises?
But not premises.
But type 12 could be on the same premises.
What, what would be the effect on current, uh, the current dispensaries if we just said, may also be allowed to the extent allowed under a, under the indoor cultivation provisions of a M12, or type 12?
I don't know what the current ones look like.
So, so I was just sort of thinking about this, and given the recommendation to the board, either alternative, I don't think that any of the cultivation licenses could be issued because either it will be banned or it'll be restricted to another zone where you can't cultivate. So you cannot cultivate under the current code. You could not get a, um, a type 1A, 2A, or 3A license.
Okay.
Because that would be inconsistent with our county code.
Yeah.
So the only way they could then cultivate would be under a, a type 12 microbusiness license.
Well, the recommendations though that we approved Friday don't apply to dispensaries.
But they apply to cultivation. And in order to get a state cultivation license, you need to be able to, so we're, there, right now, our dispensary ordinance allows some limited cultivation onsite under the existing 1791. In order to continue to cultivate under Malcursa, you would need to get a separate cultivator's license. And we could not approve that because CP zone is not a zone that allows cultivation. So the only way they could do it would be under the type 12 license.
I thought we, did, did we not have a provision saying that the cultivation chapter excluded dispensaries?
I, I thought under either alternative that we discussed last week, the dispensaries were simply not included.
That's what I thought.
Well, they were not covered.
They're not covered.
But whether they separately could go out and get a cultivation license, you know...
That's what we're going to address today.
That would be governed by what we dealt with Thursday and Friday.
Yeah, that's, that's a...
In terms of what they can do on their premises or their parcel, I don't think that what we proposed to do affected that.
Right.
I, I agree.
So we could, we could just limit it to the microbusiness license. But from what you said, Peter, it, it sounded as if at least one of the dispensaries may be cultivating under the urgency ordinance. But that, what we're talking about here is on, on this particular parcel, the only thing that's possible would be M12.
That's not true.
Oh.
It would be M12 if it's on the same premises.
On the same premises.
But, but we could change that.
Oh, yeah.
They would just have to get a different state license if it's not on the premises.
I'm just, I'm, okay, I'm just, maybe, I, I don't mean to, I'm, I'm just trying to clarify where we're going or where we can go on this. I don't mean to monopolize the discussion of it.
I don't think there's anything in 1795. No, hold on.
I mean, we can, we can also, if, if, we can go back and fix anything based on your direction. If there is something that needs to be tweaked in 1795 to whatever your decision is regarding dispensaries, we can make that, make that, that change.
So, 1795, 040A in part says, "This provision shall apply to cannabis cultivation by a nursery, but shall not apply to cannabis cultivation by a lawful permitted dispensary operating in compliance with state law in Chapter 1791 of this code." This section shall not affect the right to use or possess cannabis as authorized by state law. So probably it'd be safe, we would want to put in some level of restriction if you wanted to minimize the amount of cannabis that could be cultivated on either the premises or parcel where a dispensary is, is permitted.
And I forget what the square footage, or, yeah, square footage is under type 12.
I think it's 500 and...
Is that, is that 5,000?
There's three, there's several different square footages and licensing types on it. I just read it.
I've got it somewhere in my...
Well, the staff report sits, sits out the state indoor cultivation license types with the square footage on page three of the staff report.
Yep. Well, microbusiness type 12 in my PowerPoint notes was under 10,000 square feet. I don't know if that's just for indoor, but it's a lot.
And the state indoor cultivation license types are 1A, 501 to 5,000, 2A, 5,001 to 10,000, and 3A, 10,001 to 22, and then 5A is the 22,000 or better.
And those are the, um, the commercial cultivator licenses, not, not the, um, microbusiness.
Microbusiness, my, on my notes it says it has to be under 10,000 square feet, so it's very large.
And currently, it's, well, with basically, our restrictions are not restrictive on, on the dispensaries as far as size. I mean, it didn't have six mature plants per patient.
Right.
But I, as I understand, the current organization, which the state has pretty much mandated that we change, is that I guess the dispensaries actually have enrolled patients? So, I mean, for them to figure out what their limitation on growing, it sounds as if they have to have particular patients that they're serving.
They're required to maintain a list of their, their patients, their members of the collective.
Our current ones.
The current ordinance.
Yeah.
And, and Prop 215 and SB 420 rules operate under this collective model where the patients are a member of the dispensary collective. And so you could have 200 patients, so arguably you might be able to have, you know, six times two, 1,200, you know, 1,200 plants. Obviously, the physical limitations of the structure would, would limit that, but that doesn't, wouldn't mean that someone couldn't propose to construct a large warehouse type building with a dispensary in front and indoor cultivation activity on the outside or on the rest of it.
Yeah.
So I think it would be appropriate to place some type of limitation on that to what you think is appropriate.
I was about to say, well, what if we were to, to ask you to, to provide an equivalent under the new state law? I mean, that's, this is one, one thing that I, I don't, I mean, this, this subsection F provides all the various licenses, but as far as some sort of equivalent of what we have, what we have is, can be rather infinite. What would be the effect of just having subsection F talk about or provide that they could have a license under type 12?
You can have manufacturing and distribution under those licenses. That's the effect.
No, we've already, we've already restricted that under 7070.
But the license type through the state still gives that right.
Only to the degree that we allow it as well.
Yeah, the state gives it.
It was 10,000 feet.
Yeah, I know, I mean, which is...
I, I think that we could certainly place a lower cap on that if we choose to.
Okay.
And I, I think at this point in time, it, it sounds like we might want to limit, I'm trying to remember the numbers. We probably don't want to have a 2A, 3A, or 5A type license permitted. I'm not even, I suppose they could apply for a 1A license and if we wanted to put something smaller than 5,000 square feet.
But that couldn't be on the same, or something.
I think I would, before...
It could be.
I'd like to hear from the other commissioners before we start making determinations on that.
No, no, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm just looking for...
No, no, I understand, I understand, but, but there's more commissioners to weigh in and we could spend three hours on one chapter with you.
Oh, that's true.
And not get anywhere else and hear from the other commissioners. So I'd like to, thank you.
Do you have something you'd like to say, Commissioner Pacelli?
No.
Need more coffee?
I need more coffee.
Okay. Commissioner Sisk?
I have a lot. Um, I definitely think that we need to regulate, how many square feet? I think 5,000 is way too much. I'm having a hard time with the happy medium for me because I don't think that they should be reviewing. This is my personal opinion. Yes, ma'am. If we have to put in a regulation, I want it to be very strict. I want it to be very small. This is my opinion.
Thank you.
Well, I don't, I think that the license should be no more than M1, which is the smallest allowed, and I would put additional square footage restrictions. We don't have a good handle on what's actually being done now. I asked the sheriff if he knew and he didn't, the maximum canopy that's now being cultivated by a dispensary on premises. But I would think something in the order of 400 square feet, which is 20 by 20 ought to be plenty.
I've been in two of the dispensaries, I've not been to the third, and the amount of cultivation area that I saw is certainly less than that at this point in time in those two. I don't know what, what type of cultivation facility, if any, is happening at the Little Trees dispensary up in Arnold. My understanding is that they are, they have a separate cultivator registration at a separate location. I don't think they're doing any cultivation onsite. So I think a number as small as 200 or 400 square feet would certainly not diminish what is happening already on those parts, those premises.
So I called the state and asked them if they had to have an M license, and they said absolutely not. And I said, can they get a commercial growing license? And they said yes. And I said, so 201 square feet could be considered a commercial license? And they said, yes, technically. And I said, okay. And if our county bans commercial growing out in the fields, period, done, over, because that's the direction the supervisors are leaning in. But we allowed three commercial growing license within the dispensaries at under 300 square feet. Would that qualify us for the Prop 64 funds that the state is trying to take away from us if we don't have commercial growing licenses? She hung up the phone. She said, I'll call you back. She hung up the phone. She said, "I'll call you back." She called back, and she said, "You found a loophole. Yes, you would qualify for all of your Prop 64 funds by forcing your dispensaries to have a commercial grow license, even if it's a limitation." Those funds are about ten million dollars to this county for law enforcement, public roads, all of the things that our county is missing out on, according to the woman at the state. So, why would, I don't care if we give them an M license, I'd prefer if we're going to license them to grow, it'd be under commercial, and we receive the Prop 64 funds.
Until they close the loophole.
Until they close the loophole. Well, then we'll readdress it then. But in the meantime, we have to have some law enforcement funds to protect this county, depending on what direction we go. So if the Board of Supervisors looked at the dispensaries and said, "Hey, okay, let's do this with a commercial license under Prop 64, get those funds until they shut us down." Because if they choose to do a ban, we don't get any of those funds. So, this is one way to go about it in a different direction.
And there's a continuing question under the statutes as to whether or not we would also have to allow some of the, the personal grows outdoors, which we decided not to do last week.
You don't have to allow the personal grows outdoors.
Okay. I'm glad to hear your confidence.
They said they wouldn't change that, that they would look at it again if the federal government decided that it wasn't illegal. That's actually in Prop, in SB 94, that the state, the state would like to do, allow it outdoor, but said that it's not going to revisit it unless the federal government changes its mind on the status of cannabis.
So it's, it sounds as if, and now we're getting a little past the question stage and into the real discussion, what we, what we ought to do is, if we, if we allow the M-type 1A license or the M-type 12 license, but limit it to indoor grows within, under four hundred feet, or, four, four hundred square feet or less, send that up, and the dispensaries can come in and say, "Oh, they didn't consider the facts," or whatever, and convince the Board of Supervisors to do something else. At least we've got something.
That would be fine with me.
That we could conclude.
I wasn't clear on the, the, the M-type 12. You said it was ten thousand square feet.
But we can limit it.
But we can, we can limit it.
Well, if, if you're gonna, if you're gonna, there's an email out there going around right now on that M-type 12, and there was a lot of concerns, and I got it from emails from both sides of the world here, but the M-12 allowed manufacturing and distribution. And one of the emails from one of the dispensaries stated, "They need an M-12 to be able to process, trim, this, that, and the other," but...
I don't, I...
I, I, I'm reading that, and that puts in the manufacturing, which changes the whole picture, and we've restricted that, so...
I, I defined cultivation, the definition of cultivation in the, in Malkursa includes all of the drying, trimming, et cetera.
Okay, so they, they...
And so that, what, what it doesn't include is taking it and making a product out of it, whether it's an edible product, or, manufacturing is basically taking it and creating an edible product, or a topical product, or hash oil. That's, that's manufacturing. But just the trimming and drying, all of that was included in the state's definition of cultivation. I can find it and read it again.
While she's doing that, of course, whatever's grown on these premises are gonna be, it's gonna be subject to state testing as of...
Yeah, cultivation means any activity involving the planting, growing, harvesting, drying, curing, grading, or trimming of cannabis.
Okay, so the email that we got asking for the M-12 license. Where is it?
Anybody growing would have to go, send it to a separate independent lab for testing. There can't be a lab and anything else.
Can't just come from the back room and go up to the counter.
But they, but what they would have to do if we didn't allow the manufacturing is they would have to send it to a manufacturer to process it into a manufactured product, even if it was their own cannabis, and then they would sell it back as the final.
But they could sell buds out of it.
They could sell buds, right. And they wouldn't be allowed, and if we don't allow the distribution, they wouldn't be allowed to do wholesale to other dispensaries.
So, why wouldn't we then simply specify an M-type 1A license? And with a square footage restriction of, say, four underscore feet?
The only, the only reason to do, the, the, to allow the type 12, or to keep in mind, is that you can't, with a type, as I read Malkursa, again, it's not been tested, not all the language is super intuitive, it appears, it appears that without the M-type 12, you need two separate premises then on your parcel, one for the dispensing and one for the cultivating. If it's all taking place on the same premises, then you can't, it doesn't sound like you can do that with two separate licenses. They would need a separate retailer license and a cultivation license.
But a type 12, you don't...
But they could do that, right?
They, they could do that, but then they'd have to have two separate premises for the activity.
And the, but the type 12, as I understand it, it gets past that problem.
As I read Malkursa, type 12 allows a single premises.
Then you have restricted the, the broad capabilities that come with an M-12 license, we have restricted in the draft so that a lot of those possibilities are taken away.
They, we, we've written this to, so that, to do, basically, to try to allow the same things that were allowed in the prior 1791. And the way to do that, given the new licensure scheme, was to allow two of the four activities and prohibit the other two regardless of what their state license allows.
And then that's clearly...
And if they violate that, that would be grounds for a removal of the state licensure, even if the state license allows it, because they have, they're required to follow the rules of the local jurisdiction.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Now, under the, the new world, anybody with the proper certificate will be able to come into a dispensary and, for medicine, medicinal purposes.
They have to have their card and/or physician's recommendation, and they, they have to look for ID to make sure they're of age.
Yeah, and that's, that's it. And that's, we can't, we can't restrict that.
We can...
That's, I mean, well, we could, we could, we could ban the whole thing.
What do you mean by...
Well, I mean, you know, the, the old world of the enrolled patients and that sort of thing is gone.
Well, there's, no...
No, no, it's not, because the state doesn't tax medicinal, so people are gonna, what they're predicting is a rush on medical cards, so they don't have to pay the extra cost of the tax under the state. Under our Measure C, we can collect tax on the medicinal and the recreational, but under state you can't. And if you're gonna have a facility, medicinal has to be on one side of the room, recreational on the other, and they have to be operated and sold separately. They can't be joined together.
Yeah, but I, I, I mean, I, as I understand it, I think we've got the commission saying, "We're not gonna provide for recreational dispensary."
If you're going to give them a type M-12 license, which was my next question, that is for a microbusiness, which is recreational. So if you're saying you're not giving them recreational, but you look at M-12...
No, it says a M-12, which is the medical.
You can do, same, just like any other license, it's either an M-type 12 or an A-type 12. A is adult use, and M is medical. So you can get a license that restricts medical type 12.
Okay, so, my next question is, because obviously there's emails out there floating everywhere regarding litigation on making these decisions, and I'm wondering if maybe now we're putting the cart before the horse, and more research doesn't need to be done, because one of the emails that I got was, "Okay, the voters passed Measure C. And under Prop 218, if our county chooses to override the voters with an ordinance, we're breaking the law," and so they're threatening litigation there by saying, "The voters voted to license recreational in our county," or, "Collect tax for recreational medicinal," and, I'm just saying it like it is. These are the emails floating.
I understand. I think that's, that's bizarre.
Do we need to research that? Because has our county now passed Measure C? And we've said we're gonna have recreational, medicinal, and commercial growing tax collected in this county, and if we restrict it via ordinance, we are not following the initiative of the voters.
I would not recommend that we talk about the county's legal status vis-à-vis that threat in this, in open session.
That's why I'm saying, maybe we need to stop. Maybe we need to be researching decisions that we're making before we make them.
I don't see a reason right now to not make a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. I'm assuming that our office, to the extent there's any concern about continuing, that recommendation would inform the Board of Supervisors. We're just an advisory.
I know, so my recommendation is to the board to maybe take a look at further researching 17.91, them giving a recommendation to us to do this, and legal counsel doing more research, because we can make a recommendation, but maybe they need to be telling us to go a little bit deeper and not just jump.
Well, what I, what I think, what I would recommend that you do in this case is make a, make your ideal policy recommendation, what you would like to see happen. I, we can work today to make sure that it's, at least dovetails with state law. And then along with that recommendation, obviously, is, the caveat on the recommendation would be that if the county council's office discovers anything wrong with the recommendation, that they advise the board differently.
Okay.
And I think, I think that's a good approach, because we currently have an ordinance that is completely out of step with the state statutes. And I think we ought to move, move the proposed ordinance on...
That's how we operate.
Oh. I think, I just think it's important that we move this on with, with that caveat, and it's fine.
Well, it'd be nice to get past this particular subject, so, that's a sense, are we going to recommend allowing a type 12 license without the manufacturing and distribution features? So then they can do it on the same premises? Is that the sense?
I don't want it off-premise.
Well, you could...
I don't want it restricted to indoors on-premise, not off.
Correct.
Okay.
And then, and then square footage, is there any consensus on how much?
I think your four hundred is, I mean, we, we just do it for now, and let, let the cards fall, and, you know, there'll be more input, as long as we get something specific up there, where then people can come and say what's wrong or what's right with it.
Okay, then, are we gonna start at, like, the beginning and go through this and see if people have comments?
Yeah, but I, I think while we're, we're at that consensus, I, I, I think, although I don't fully understand it, I think maybe it's, it'd be good to have that subdivision F include the, the M-type 1A license, cross out the others, and then cut back into, or the indoor cultivation provisions, going to M-12, so that there's that.
Okay, well, I think legal counsel will do all of that cleanup for us. I think we were pretty clear on our direction.
Okay.
So I don't think we need to sit here and write it. I think that's...
No, 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 I, I, I agree, but I mean, give those, those two options.
Yeah, well, we do want the indoor cultivation license for the reasons expressed by Commissioner Mutty.
Yeah, and, and I think since we're talking about indoor license, we talk about a filter approved by the county as we move...
The charcoal, what was it, the charcoal?
Well, I think we just have the filter approved by the county, so we can, you can keep up to date with what they're technological...
So we, we have, we're gonna allow, or we're gonna require either an M-type 1A or an M-type 12? Is that the consensus?
With a limitation.
Right, that only two, okay.
And, and the filter.
And the filter, all right.
Okay.
Well, is, is F where you put the four hundred square feet limitation?
Well, it's where, where are the things that are...
I don't know if it'd be better to have it there or to have it under the operating restrictions, but we can deal with that.
Yeah.
Under oh seven oh.
Okay, I think that's the hardest part of this morning.
All right, I'm gonna, you know what I'm gonna do? I'm gonna start at that end of the table, and we're gonna work this way, and let's go through page, I believe we're starting on page, do you wanna start with any of the definitions, or do you wanna start on page five with any recommendations that you may have?
I wanna start with the definitions.
I knew that, okay.
And the, the definition that I suggest ought to be changed is OO, the definition of sensitive use. It seems to be narrower than what's in the current dispensary ordinance.
This is the, yeah, the state law has a sensitive use definition, which this is based off of. I know there had been concerns about the language in our existing 1791, so if we, okay, so if you wanted to add other areas to it, just understand we'll be going then outside of the state definition and doing our own separate, which we can.
That's okay, we need to.
Okay, well, the, what we now have includes sensitive uses, the, another dispensary, the schools, high school, public library, public park, and then you can't have it within a thousand feet of a youth-oriented establishment characterized by either or both of the following: the establishment advertises in a manner that identifies the establishment as catering to or providing services primarily intended for minors, or B, the individuals who regularly patronize, congregate, or assemble at the establishment are predominantly minors. We have that, which would, is not in the current draft. There's also been a recommendation that family childcare homes should be included in this definition of sensitive uses. That was in one of the comments. And I know from previous experience on this commission that the issue of the bus stops came up, as to whether that should be considered. People seem to think it should. So I think this definition should be broader to, broaden to include all those things.
Okay, and so one of the issues that we ran into before was that it was a commercial center and a roundtable pizza with an arcade in it. We felt as the commission, and it was not clarified enough in here, so it was like this hanger over our head, but we did not feel like it should have been in a commercial center where there were arcades and children passing back and forth past it. So when you have a strip mall, and you've got places with restaurants and things that children are going to, it's not clarified, or was not clarified enough here when we were trying to make our decisions, that strip malls with restaurants and places with arcades that children congregate at was an issue. And it also was an issue that preschools, because we had that preschool there, by the one that they were trying to put in, so then that wasn't in there. The previous Board of Supervisors refused to put bus stops, because that was one of the things that I remember being talked about, and their reasoning was bus stops are moving targets. Because the one, I think it was in Copper, the bus stop was actually in the shopping center where they wanted to open the dispensary. So, I mean, to me, and I, and it was at a thousand feet. I understand OO is the state's, but ours is much stricter and needed to be even more stricter.
I would suggest that we make it as strict as the existing ordinance, and let the Board of Supervisors decide if they wanna make it stricter.
I just wanna know then, do you wanna add some definitions, term definitions to what we have?
Yes.
If we're taking the existing 1791, maybe we should develop some more specific terms so that we don't have arguments about what counts as one thing or another. So, is family childcare for, was that, is that in our current dispensary?
It is not.
It is not.
Okay.
What I'm suggesting is that right, for, for right now, we make it as broad as what our current ordinance is.
And add to it.
Well, I, I don't, I don't think we need to add to it.
Okay, so I have one vote, two votes, three votes, we're adding to it. I want it to be all children, not just thirteen and older, 'cause our ordinance was confusing, and, and it sounded as if though it was older children, it did not include preschools.
So what are the, I just wanted to know, like, if we're including family childcare, is that something defined in the Health and Safety Code? Is there a definition for that?
That's in the state where it says a daycare center, so that...
So that's already incorporated by the state?
A family daycare home is a home that, a state license to provide daycare provisions for up to, I believe it is twelve, there's small family daycare and large family daycare, and they keep changing the numbers. It used to be six, I think they bumped it up to eight, and then twen- And they keep changing the numbers. It used to be six, I think they bumped it up to eight and then twelve, but I'm not sure of the exact numbers. So there's different categories of daycare facilities. These are facilities in someone's home that provide daycare.
Well, I think they should be included. I mean.
The one question, and one of the reasons that I took the position I just did is that I don't know how this affects, how any of these additional terms would affect the current.
The current ones are safe. There's not any issues there.
Well, I, okay, if you're, if you're confident, that's great.
I want to make a different recommendation, and we don't even have to beat this to death. And I want to take a poll of the commissioners. I want to limit it to three. We're done. We have what we need. We don't need any more. Then we don't have to worry about rewriting and rewriting and rewriting. We have three dispensaries. Do you want to have five? Do you want to have ten? Do you want to have twenty?
That brings up the question of, of transferability and I have.
They have transferability. I'm not taking that away. I'm just saying, do we want to limit how many dispensaries we have?
I know, but.
I don't know if we can do it constitutionally.
Yes, we can.
Oh, thank you.
Other cities and counties have done it.
Let's, but that was my instinct over the weekend, was limited to what we have. Problem I saw with it was, are we going to, by giving these people and have it transferable, giving these people a monopoly and giving them a gold mine?
They already have a gold mine.
Well, not as much if, if other dispensaries can be formed, other areas of the county.
Right, right now, the existing dispensaries have a trans, they have a vested interest that's transferable to other conforming.
I, I know, but it's, if we limit it to three, that means it's that much more valuable. It's one of three possible things that.
How many should we limit?
So wait, could, do you want to, hang on, do you want to limit it to the existing locations? Or are you limiting it three based on individual, and we can say that these are the only three locations? That's, we can limit locationally, we can also limit by, by number, which goes along with, with a person or an applicant.
If nobody else shares my concern, and you want to limit it to three, I'm not gonna.
So just, just so, full disclosure, we have one other application that is pending in our office that is close to approval. Haven't had a chance to sit down at my desk for the last several days. And so we may have a fourth dispensary authorized in the county. Now, of course, it still would be subject to whatever appeal process is. But to the best of my knowledge, they meet all of the standards that are required.
I believe they meet any of the standards that we set forth as well as far as childcare.
You could also do a moratorium on new applications.
Douglas flat.
It's not really next day.
So if we say, limit it to the existing dispensaries as of the date of the enactment of this ordinance?
So do you want it to be a moratorium on new applications? That would include applications if one of them shuts down? Or do you want to have a permanent limit of four?
Permanent limit of the three that are already open. Well, the four is already in the process.
I think it should be limited.
I agree.
Just a four?
Well, either four or five.
I'm good with five.
Good with five, okay.
And then how are we going to decide who gets the five permits?
First come, first served, isn't it?
Well, I mean, that, there's, so.
Well, four of them are taken. There's one left.
So we restricting that then to the planning commission, the planning director shall process them as they, they are received? Okay.
There'll be another issue as to what kind of permit ought to be required, but we can come to that. Like, should it be a CUP?
It is CUP, isn't it?
No, it's an AUP.
If we only have four now, why are we changing it to five?
There may be another area of the county that, where one would be appropriate.
Because we've restricted it to medicinal, so we're serving medicinal patients, not recreational, I guess. I don't know the answer to what you're asking.
There are a lot of people that are relying upon.
But I do like hearing from you for a change, Karen, speak up.
Well, I think that we should leave it at the four that are already there. We don't need to open another one.
So if we limit it to the four, then there's no question of who gets it. You have your four applicants already. It's done.
Well, assuming that this fourth one.
Assuming number four gets approved.
Gets approved and is ultimately, yeah.
Now, there was, yeah, okay.
I would go with the five, just for the record.
Five.
I'd like to see the four, and if the fourth one doesn't get approved, then it knocks back down to the three that are already currently running.
And how many you want?
I'd go for five to provide for a geographical spread.
Okay, there's three votes on five.
Okay.
Okay, did we, did we finish up the sensitive use?
Sorry, I was just trying to help you along in case that, that was an issue, but now we need to finish it. So yes, your daycare centers.
I would like, what would be helpful for me is a bullet point, like list of all of the provisions that you want to be added in there. And I want to make sure that if there's a different definition under state law for all of these things, that I'm clear on how you would like it to change.
I think strip malls is a big issue for me because when we've done a couple of hearings and they were trying to put it into a strip mall, it was so difficult because strip malls, lease and tenants change out. Parents do go to a strip mall to shop, whether it be for clothes or eat or whatever. It had an impact on where that dispensary was going. So for me, if it's a strip mall, unless that strip mall is designated for that type of use and it's five dispensaries in one location, I'm not, I don't think it's appropriate to have the children walking back and forth in front of it.
So no strip malls?
Well, the problem we have is that we have one that currently is in a strip mall, so you're gonna, that's a problem.
I mean, that's, might be where you find most of the CP zoning. I don't know.
Well, I do think that if, in terms of opening new ones, if we change the AUP requirement to a CUP, then we can look at these on an individual basis and say it's just not appropriate here.
But do we have to have an ordinance that explains why it's not appropriate? We just can't make it up out of the top of our heads?
Well, the CUP by its nature is doing that, is you make findings of why it can be approved or not approved. You know, and each site is unique based on the unique circumstances of that site. In general, what you're saying is it could be okay here if it, you know.
Well, I think it gives the public a voice, and the public deserves a voice when it comes to opening up dispensaries, in my opinion.
That's why I'm suggesting going to a CUP.
I agree.
And then.
But the, the current ones would automatically.
They will have to renew on a CUP. Is that a yearly renewal? It is, correct? The dispensaries are currently on a yearly renewal or by yearly?
Yearly.
It, it is their renewal yearly. If they are already use permitted under an AUP,
Yep.
I don't know that we would be able to suddenly acquire a CUP.
Okay, so could you put all futures will require a CUP? And then once they're, once they're permitted, they can go to an AUP, so it's an administrative renewal? Can we do that?
Is that, CUP with AUP as a renewal? I don't know. I would want to research that.
The conditional use permit is typically granted to the property and is vested right. And so once it is approved and validated, the only, the only way you would typically rescind that approval is through revocation process where they're in violation of the terms of the, the permit. And so we might have an annual review to ensure they're in compliance. But you have to go through our normal revocation process where you say, oh, we're not going to, you know, the. It wouldn't be an AUP, you wouldn't renew it through an AUP. You would just confirm that it's still in compliance with the code.
I guess part of the, the right that they have is the right to sell it at, with the value of it being a vested property, so.
An administrative, you don't? Or you do?
Well, you couldn't go to stricter with the current.
Right.
As far as the type of permit without there being a revocation or amortization.
Our administrative use permit is sort of a hybrid of staff level. Use permit, it's not discretionary. It's if you meet our standard and then we renew the use permit just to affirm compliance with the standards.
So could we put into the CUP that it's going to require yearly inspection and that it will require a research of code compliance? Because when I was looking at, I, I had actually wanted code compliance to come and give us a report on the dispensaries and learned that the sheriff does those inspections, not code compliance. That's why I asked the sheriff to come and give us a report on any issues that they've seen. So when you're renewing a permit, my question is, do you take a look at any compliance issues that have occurred with the sheriff's department citations or code compliance? You do?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So, so what are?
It's actually the planning department that does that inspection, but we do coordinate with the sheriff as far as any kind of outstanding complaints or issues we've had.
So if we apply the, the CUP requirement to future applications.
Correct.
Then the one that's in the pipeline doesn't get ballistics done. The application that's currently.
I think the opening of the new ones is the issue and making sure the public has a voice.
Yeah.
But doesn't the CUP approach require full CEQA and all that?
It would be subject to CEQA, yes.
You need an E I, well, you have to determine if it needs any IR.
Yeah, I mean, if, if they're moving into an existing building, there's probably not much in the way of environmental effects. Or, you know, if it's a new construction, that's a different situation.
There was some mention a while ago of, well, I'm getting off subject.
No, it's okay. Go ahead.
Well, you talked about the strip malls and banning them from strip malls altogether?
In the future. Can't do it for the existings, but you could for futures.
On the CUP basis.
And I, you know, for me, if you're doing a CUP, I don't want to ban it.
I would be very hesitant because we have to define what a strip mall is.
Right.
If you're, if you're. A strip mall is what we call a strip mall and not a medical office building.
That's correct. So I guess, if it's going through a CUP and the public has a voice at that point in time, then I don't know that we need to say no strip malls because they may say it's appropriate. The public may not, you know.
I think that's great.
Well, in terms of the sensitive uses, is it okay to, to go back to what we already have in ninety one, which is broader than what's been proposed? And add family childcare homes, which are licensed by the state? We've already heard what they are. And I think school bus stops. And if there's no school bus stop there at the time, well, okay. The dispensary goes in and that's just the way it is. But if there is a school bus there at the time, can't be within a thousand feet of it.
I'm good with that.
I, I think part of the problem, I, I think when it was being considered before, it wasn't to leave it at what was existing at the time the application came in, but there was the issue of forcing a move if one came in later. So I'm assuming for all of these, you're talking about what's existing at the type, time the application comes in?
Just the futures.
Okay.
Yes.
I mean, I don't think we can go back and restrict the ones.
Or is the commission happy with the existing definitions in seventeen ninety one for sensitive uses?
Not under the definition. It's very vague.
So I'm just, I know you want the same protections.
We want to incorporate our county ordinance that was drafted with additions.
Yeah, where, where was?
Your, your current, the, the old seventeen ninety one? Right, and I'm asking, if we're incorporating those policies, are you happy with the language that exists? To discuss those policies?
In the existing.
The last page of the packet is the, the old ordinance seventeen ninety one, O six O B.
My mind stops at C.
B.
B.
Oh, okay.
Well, I think it needs to be broader to include kindergarten.
Well, I think kindergarten includes elementary school. I would suggest if this is your intent, that you would say preschool and licensed daycare facility.
And does licensed daycare facility include the childcare homes?
Yes. We'll verify that, but I'm pretty sure it is.
So we're going to have the state language supplemented by this or just this language?
This would be our definition of sensitive use.
Do our own definition. But are you okay with the definition of youth oriented establishment? As it's in old seventeen ninety one?
I am.
Yes.
One thing I want to remind everybody is that the default when we allow dispensaries is that we're allowing deliveries unless the commission wants to affirmatively restrict or ban deliveries. Under state law, if you're silent on delivery, dispensaries can deliver to customers.
I think, given the fact that a lot of the valid customers are elderly people, I think delivery is, I, I don't see the downside of, of allowing deliveries.
Well, under Public Comment Friday, it was brought up that one of the dispensaries is not ADA compliant. I've visited the building and it's not. It's a stairwell that goes up two flights of stairs. And so when this was questioned by the community at multiple different times, it was said that because they deliver it to the parking lot is the reason it didn't have to be ADA compliant.
So retailer delivery requirements under the state law, I think when the state uses the term delivery, they're assuming transporting it in a vehicle to the home of the patient.
I understand that, but I'm also bringing up the delivery to parking lots. Because they can't get out of the car and go inside.
So the, the requirements under state law for anybody doing, for any retailer doing delivery is, delivery by the retailer is allowed unless county expressly bans it. Although we cannot ban traffic on public roads if it's in compliance with the law. It can only be, you know, through traffic of other counties delivering to patients here. Can only be made by a licensed retailer, licensed micro business, or licensed nonprofit. All personnel conducting deliveries must carry a copy of the licensee's current state license and government issued photo ID. They must present to law enforcement and county enforcement agents this information on request. So.
So, but the, the code, like I was talking about in Public Comment on the ADA, don't, don't we find that to be an issue when this is a medical facility supposedly? Just asking. Or am I just not thinking straight?
So there was quite a bit of debate at the time, or some time ago, about that issue. And the building department, which is charged with enforcement of the accessibility standards of a business, determined that because of the minimal amount of physical improvements required the building under state law, the structure was not required to have additional accessibility improvements made to the building. It does not necessarily protect the property owner from litigation under federal law. But our requirement is to enforce the state accessibility standards under the California Building Code. That is the language that's in the draft ordinance. It doesn't specifically refer to ADA standards because,
Under T.
It is, it is an unclear statute when it comes to what is actually required of a county to enforce. And if we end up having, the, the building official was, recommended this language so that it was very clear what the county's responsibility is in this case. Should someone decide that they wanted to access the dispensary and couldn't, the owner, operator, property owner could face litigation under federal law. But they were not required. But they were not required to improve it under state law. And that's what their choice to do. I think that rather than get the county involved in potential litigation that we really don't have any control over, I think it would be better to keep the language that we have recommended by the building official and let the operator and the public resolve, you know, issues outside the county's control.
Okay, so to go back to Julie's question, obviously, we don't want to touch that between federal and state laws. We're just going to open up a can of worms on ourselves.
You wanted to ask me.
Well, I'm not sure where we are on deliveries.
Wait, so I was just going to go back to.
I mean, I didn't hear that the state law requires that it be delivered to any particular place, like to the customer's place, as opposed to a parking lot. Is that correct?
I would say that, at least under our existing provisions, all the activity must be conducted within the building. And so delivering in the parking lot, I would think would be out of compliance with our local ordinance currently. I have not, I've heard stories about how they've gotten around this. I don't know if that's true or not.
And the customer, if we allow, if we do nothing and allow the state provision for delivery to happen, why the customer of that dispensary could just call another dispensary and have it delivered? If they will deliver that far.
Well, dispensary to dispensary has to be distributors. There's, there's rules about who can deliver to who.
Well, a distributor is from licensee to licensee. Does that include the person with the ID? I didn't think it would.
No, the, I think that to go from a wholesaler to a dispense, I don't think that delivery by a retailer means dispensary to dispensary. It means dispensary to the customer.
What I'm saying is that since there's no longer going to be, this is a client of this dispensary or that dispensary. If we, if, under the state law that allows deliveries by vehicle, unless we say it does not, why clients who might not be able to climb two flights of stairs for one dispensary can call another dispensary and ask for a delivery.
They, right, an out of county dispensary might deliver it to them and we can't stop it on public roads.
Well, one of the other dispensaries in the county.
No, so the one dispensary we're talking about that is not accessible to all patients, they'll have four other dispensaries to choose from.
That's, that's what I'm saying.
Okay, so here's the issue that I'm going to take with this one and you guys can continue to debate, but I'm just going to put it out there. We're not allowing recreational, we're saying it's medicinal only. And I had to have exposure to, my brain just died, I apologize. When there, I don't know why I left my brain. There's people that are on their deathbed physically dying and the caretakers are dispensing that for them. They don't have a license to go into the facility and get it, but it gets delivered to the licensed patient on their deathbed. That is real. So, and I'm trying to, one of the people that, who goes there when you're dying and takes care of you? And oh my gosh, thank you. My brain died, hospice does a lot. They, I've sat and talked with hospice and they do a lot of dispersing of this medication. They get the delivery to the patient in their home. They don't go to the dispensary and get it and take it to home. It's delivered to their home and they provide for them. So if you're looking at it in a medicinal component, that's real. If you're looking at it in a recreational and, oh, I'm going to bring it to you in the parking lot, I'm having an issue with that. So can we limit it to where they deliver it to? They have to be taking it to a licensed person in their home. I mean, that's just.
Well, or in a hospital, whatever, wherever they happen.
Or a hospital, I guess you could say that.
A private residence or?
Wherever they are, the patient.
So just, I want to be clear here.
If you go into wherever they are, that could be out in the parking lot again.
Well, so delivering it to the place of?
Premises of the licensed patient. The premises at that time is the hospital or if it's at the home, fine. But parking lot does not apply.
Okay, we can, I'm sure we can.
Put an elevator in and then we don't have that issue, everybody can.
So I just want to be clear, I need to walk back my statement a little bit about the delivery in the parking lot that may not be prohibited. The code says, no cannabis may be smoked, ingested, or otherwise consumed on the premises of the dispensary. And the premises means the building, the disciplinary structures, parking areas. That's what I was thinking of, but it talks about consumption of it, not just delivery. So there probably isn't anything in our code right now that would prohibit delivery in the parking lot in that instance.
Okay, I took the time to visit a dispensary and I just wanted to tell you that I was quite impressed. You walk in the door, I'm not licensed, so I just had to stand back and observe as people came in. They come in, they stand in front of the computer, their picture is taken, their driver's license is scanned. That does not take place in a parking lot. So that's an issue for me. I don't know how, I mean, I guess if you're medicinally disabled, you're in your car, you have a wheelchair, blah, blah, blah. I don't know. It's very, it's very complicated. I mean, for all of us sitting up here, we're judging based on the recreational use and thinking everybody has a medicinal license to be able to get it legally. But is there really a medicinal component? Is it just the three hundred dollars they paid to get that license? Or is it real and they're an actual patient? There's no way for us to judge that, it's not our job to judge that. But to watch the identification process, and that's how the dispensary was telling me how wonderful it is, and look at our process, it's great. And comes up on the computer and there's a picture of the patient and there's a picture of their face standing in front of them. I guess they could take their license in form and their driver's license and scan it because they're scanning the driver's license thing. And look at their picture and then go back out to the car with their product. I guess that they could do that. I mean, it's complicated. I don't know that I approve of deliveries to parking lots. If they're really a sick patient and they're in their roster and they're in their computer, take it and deliver it to their home. Cost them more money that way then, doesn't it? I don't know how you guys want to handle it.
I think you've gone, this discussion's gone beyond.
The scope of where we need to be.
What we need to talk about. I don't care if they deliver to a parking lot, frankly. I've got a lot of other ideas in here, but this is bizarre.
Okay, do we want delivery?
Yes.
That's the question?
Yes.
Okay, delivery's done.
Are we skipping anything about the parking lot?
I guess we are.
Okay.
There's, it's too complicated, it's too.
Okay. There will be, the state's also developing minimum security requirements for deliveries. So I expect that the problems that there might be right now will probably in the next year be taken care of by state requirements that are going to strengthen security and exposure.
Sorry.
It's up to you.
I'm not happy with it. The state's done with this, so I don't know what requirements.
I'm just saying they're going to make it stricter.
Okay, so we can move on. You want to take a break real quick?
I think so.
Minute, for an hour, forty minutes? Okay. I don't think we've accomplished anything.
It's your dream, not mine.
Break, what does it say about me, right?
Okay, so we've only got two hours and ten minutes left to work on this. We will be adjourning at noon.
We can go till twelve thirty.
Pardon me?
We can go till twelve thirty if we need to.
I'm adjourning at noon. So Commissioner Wooster, if you could just punch down your list and then, we'll try not to interrupt. We'll make some notes and then we can find out where our issues are instead of getting off track and rambling. And I'm sorry because I know I did a lot of that and I apologize. So let's try and get on track and move down your list real quick.
Okay, my next one is the suggestion by county council to add seventeen point nine one point oh four oh G. Making it clear that cannabis cultivation is not to be deemed an agricultural operation or illegally existing agricultural land use. I think that's appropriate, but we need to make a decision on it. It was handed out at the last meeting.
This is language that's currently in the urgency ordinance. And it clarifies that whatever add protections there might be under right to farm, don't apply it to the cannabis plant.
I agree.
Okay, I think you got all five votes on that.
We're doing this page.
Let's let him through.
I know, we're doing page by page. Are you going through your suggestion for the whole thing or are we going through page by page?
I think we could go through page by page if you want. That was my next one.
Yeah, I think, I think that's good.
And then I think we've already discussed requiring a CUP for new applications. So that would change seventeen point nine one point oh five oh A and also in other places. But I think we can leave that up to the council and the planning department to get the language straight.
On that, can I comment on? I think in the text, we should have the full name of the permit. In other words, I know you said administrative use permit, AUP, up in the title, but sometimes people kind of look past the title. So I think you ought to have administrative use permit, AUP or.
Through the whole thing?
No, no, just at the, that very first provision in A.
I don't, I don't think so.
Okay, that's the way I read things.
AUP's in there over and over.
Oh, no, 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 I'm saying just in provision A, which is the first time in the text that we come up.
It's up in oh four oh.
I, it's not worth spending time on. If nobody else has a problem, that's fine.
Okay, next.
My next one is seventeen point nine one point oh five oh D as in Delta. I think we had a, a suggestion from the sheriff's department of a substitute for that that was earlier passed out, which we need to decide if that's appropriate. I think it is.
I think it's appropriate, I agree.
I agree.
And that's regarding, just so the public knows, public background checks from the sheriff's department for all employees, not just the owner. And we want to add that into the ordinance.
All employees and volunteers.
And volunteers, that's a good word.
And it's also going to be the, instead of the, the state will have its own background check process, but it'll be the sheriff's local background check.
So we would like to adopt the sheriff's language and I think all five of us are agreeing. So.
I have something on oh five oh B. It's just the way it's worded, it sounds like the appeals from the board of supervisors happened within the county. And I would just suggest that at the top of page six, when we talk, I'm going to read the whole sentence, starting on page five. Appeals of decisions made by the planning department staff, the planning commission, and the board of supervisors with respect to an application under this section may be made pursuant to chapter seventeen point nine eight. It sounds as if we would be processing appeals and hearing appeals from the board of supervisors. And it's just, this would be clear. So it'd be crossing out.
So I think you're actually, you're saying that someone has a right to appeal under that section. This code says it will process them as provided in that section.
Processing.
And heard.
And heard, processing and heard. So this is telling the county the way we will process?
I think, I think the language I'm stating, I think, was used by the county somewhere else. But if nobody else sees a problem?
No, I don't.
I don't.
Go ahead, just clarity.
Okay, so Commissioner Wooster, were you done on oh five oh?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Sisk, I'm good with it. Commissioner Bichelli, okay. And did you have anything further on oh five oh?
If I can read my notes, I'll let you know, just a sec. Oh, yeah, on F, it's unclear to me. If you have a dispensary that's a rental and is part of a building, it sounds like the dispensary shall correct any code violations in the entire building before receiving an AUP pursuant to this chapter.
Shall be corrected? Should we do shall be corrected, then it doesn't specify?
Yeah. Well, in, in, or maybe in premises, it's the parcel that's the problem. The parcel is larger than the dispensary.
And they should correct all code violations on any APN number before opening a new business.
They, they should correct anything that they, that's within their ability to correct. But if they are a client, they're one unit on a parcel that has six units.
The way this is worded, I think you're right. This is saying it's applicant's responsibility. And what I would do is reverse it to say that no administrative use permit shall be issued where there are outstanding code violations of the parcel.
I think that's great.
On a parcel, the whole building, right? So the owner has to bring the building into compliance.
I would do the parcel because.
I would do the parcel too.
That's why I said parcel.
But just don't make it them responsible for it, that's fine.
Well, they won't get their permit until that parcel's clear of code violations. That's the way we understand that?
Yes.
Okay. Is that it for oh five oh? Okay, my, my issues were hit. Let's go to oh six oh. Commissioner Wooster, starting down there.
Well, at some point, at some point, and maybe it should be in oh six oh, there has to be authority to revoke a permit if the permitee is violating any of the provisions of this ordinance. And I don't think it's in here.
I think it's under C, but maybe we need to add specifically.
It does say maybe revoked.
Permit issued pursuant to this chapter, maybe revoked pursuant to chapter seventeen ninety oh five oh, which is the revocation procedures for fairly applied conditions of a project approval or with Title seventeen of the code and any of the following reasons. So I think that's, that's in there. So if you're not complying with the terms of this ordinance, you're in violation and the process for revocation is scheduled under seventeen ninety oh five oh.
So, so the list under C is not exclusive, it's any violation?
Right. Because it's in addition to what's under oh five oh and all the conditions applied to this permit.
And/or for any of the following reasons.
Got it, okay, I didn't have anything else on seventeen point nine one point oh six oh.
Commissioner Sisk, do you have anything?
The only thing I'm wondering is, can we put a, say there, for some reason, there's something wrong with the dispensary and code compliance, someone goes in and says it's wrong, they fix it and it's corrected. I'd like to see it put in there that they only get so many, I don't want to call it a write-up, but so many, if I go there this year and there's an issue, they fix it, I go back there next year and something else is an issue.
I believe eight point oh six now covers that and it's down to what, ten or fourteen days? It's not a six month process to fix a code violation anymore?
And there's also, they have to get their permits renewed for compliance. So if they're not complying, there's non-renewals an option.
That's not what she's referencing. She's saying they go in and they get a citation and.
Sort of a three strikes, you're out kind of approach.
Well, it is six months to fix it. There's like, nobody is following up and saying, you're supposed to have this done in ten days. And that, I think, is what she's saying.
I want it done in a certain amount of time. And I also want the three strikes, you're out. So if you're not compliant this year and then next year there's a whole nother issue or something else, I don't want it to be continued that every year something else can go wrong, something else could go wrong. No, so I want it, technically I want both. So I started with one, but you brought in both, I want both. So if you've been issued a citation for something, I want you to be able to get it done in a certain amount of days. I'd like to have ten days or less. If you get another citation, ten days or less. If you get another citation, you get revoked, you don't get it back.
So they have, there's the, there's the period of time before the citation issues, which is in lieu of. And then there's the citation where you have a certain amount of time to actually fix it. So what, what, you know, if you, if they're, if they're being told to fix something in lieu of getting a citation, there hasn't actually been action on that particular violation. It's not, it's not a conviction, so to speak. So I'd have to look at current eight point oh six. I know that they fixed a lot of ambiguities in current eight point oh six. I mean, I, but I don't, I don't know whether the current version is, would satisfy your concerns or not.
Well, listening to the sheriff's report, there were at least twenty-four violations. So there would have been three strikes, everybody's out immediately. I don't know what the violations were. I don't know what the violations were.
I thought those were just calls.
And there's alleged violations and then there's, you know, there might be alleged violations and then you don't know until the inspectors finish whether they're, they actually follow, whether, there is an actual violation. So.
We had a provision where you, was it the urgency ordinance where you couldn't have three?
I don't recall.
You revoke, get a revocation with three?
I don't remember anything in the urgency ordinance or any other ordinance that has a number along those lines.
I do think that, I mean, the annual renewal has a, it provides an option with discretion as far as the three strikes, you're out. You know, if it's a very minor violation, you know, we have the problems that we have with the three strikes law in criminal law. But I think the annual renewal is a way of keeping track of these people and dumping them if they're, if they're a bad actor.
Right.
Setting up a certain number of violations like that, I think, just leads to all sorts of problems. I think the annual renewal covers it.
I have to agree. I don't know that. I think that the tightening of eight point oh six. I guess I could, if, I understand what you're trying to say and it makes sense to me. If, say they have a citation to get something fixed, they, code compliance goes out, gives them their notice. They don't comply. At that point, I think suspensions of their license, and I believe that, doesn't the county do that already, deceased and to operate?
So C says that may be revoked for failure to comply with the conditions of project approval. So if they're not complying with project approval, then we can revoke it. We have the authority to revoke it. In, you know, there's a minor violation, they're notified of that under eight oh six. They have ten days to fix it unless additional time is granted by the code enforcement officer because of the length of time necessary, maybe to repair or to fix whatever problem it might be. And if they don't do it within a timeframe and then we concite them, it's a thousand dollars a day and we go to the hearing, hearing process. That's the new process and they can be abated within about seventeen days, a shortened timeframe.
So the eight point oh six that they're using right now on the appeals for the code compliance, that would roll over into this, correct?
Yes.
Yes, okay, so it's gone from the six-month deal that you were referring to ten days recently to the thousand dollar a day fine that wasn't there before. So does that make you happier?
So we end the situation where one of the dispensaries failed to get a temporary use permit for a special event and we informed them that that was required. So the next time they had a special event, they came in. So, yeah, they were out of compliance that one time, they realized they needed to get it. So subsequently, you know, received those temporary use permits. If they continue to do that, you know, without getting the permits or they got the permits and then, you know, didn't follow the permit requirements, that would be a different story and that would be something that could subject them to revocation. I think that we need to use some judgment on, you know, the level of violation. It could be one violation, maybe enough to revoke the whole thing. You know, if they're selling to minors, you know, you're out. But failure to get a TUP because they had a special event and there were some parking problems, you know, if they fixed it, you know, they learned their lesson hopefully and, you know, move on from there. So I think we need to have some judgment built.
I agree. Okay, any others? Commissioner Bocelli? And did you have any on oh six oh?
None.
All right, well then we'll move down to oh seven oh. And this was, I'm going to start with Wooster.
The, the existing dispensary ordinance has a provision that I couldn't find in the draft and it's seventeen point ninety one point oh five oh M. It says, "A dispensary shall provide to the planning director upon request, written evidence to the planning director's reasonable satisfaction that the dispensary is not engaged in interstate commerce as it relates to medical cannabis." And I guess my question is, why, why was that not included in the current draft?
I would have no, I don't think it's necessary for one. I think that the state track and trace program is going to cover that much better than I could do in any case. I wouldn't know if they're engaging in interstate commerce. I wouldn't know what kind of documentation to, I mean, it might make sense that the sheriff's office be involved in that, but I don't know why the planning director would be involved in that kind of review. And I think it's adequately covered under the state provisions.
And proving the absence of something is sometimes hard. You have to look at the entire dispensary.
Can we reference that in here?
It gave me a certain amount of comfort because that, at least on its face, would seem to indicate that this is a matter for state concern, not federal concern. We're approving something here that's allowing sales of a Schedule One product, which I have no doubt the federal government has full authority to do that with respect to interstate commerce. Might be questionable with respect to activities occurring purely locally. And I would think this evidence could be certified to me, you're not selling interstate.
If it makes you feel more comfortable, you can certainly put that in there.
I would like it in there.
And that's all I had on the seventeen point nine one point oh seven oh.
That was three pages. There were three pages there.
Yeah.
This is a testament to the good work done by county councils.
I agree.
Good segue, yeah.
I was referencing item T, which was the ADA. But you want, we want to leave that alone, we already discussed it, so we're not going to go there anymore. So we'll go on to oh eight oh, zero eight zero. You have anything?
No, I don't.
Okay, we're going to go into zero nine zero.
Actually, I would like to modify oh eight oh A. Annual inspection conducted by code compliance. I would like to add, and the planning department.
Okay, okay. Did I get a third vote for him?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, yes.
Okay, so now we'll go to zero nine zero, pre-existing permitted medical cannabis dispensaries. Of course, you're going to go through here and change operating under the valid AUP.
We'll be getting rid of the two A, three A, and five A.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you. So we're only going to allow the one A, right?
And the twelve.
And the M twelve, should that be added there?
It's up above, I think.
Through there.
Where, oh yeah, it is above, sorry. Now. So when I, I guess I just, I have issues with this M twelve microbusiness. Does that mean it's recreational or does that mean medicinal? Or does microbusiness mean?
No, it's amitri, amitri is only medical.
Got it. That word microbusiness, okay. Okay, so is there any other comments on zero nine zero?
No.
No.
Okay, release liability and hold harmless, one seven nine one one zero zero.
No comment.
Okay, we'll go into enforcement, which is one one zero.
I have something there on E, we need to amend it the way we did under the proposed ban ordinance. Take out, each and every day, take out the comma or portion thereof, comma. We had discussion on this the other day and we decided that that or portion thereof could just lead to problems.
What section are we in?
Well, this is E, one ten E.
Oh, okay.
Okay, everybody else is good at this point? We'll go to one two zero.
Okay, on one two zero, unless it's somewhere else in here, I don't see any requirement that a dispensary allow inspections. And if they don't allow inspections, they can get their permit revoked. Seems to me that they ought, that enforcement ought to be able to demand access there anytime during business hours and if they don't let them in, the planning director can revoke it.
I like that.
Don't we have language similar to what's being proposed? Do we have that in the seventeen nine five? I'll look for language along those lines.
Well, I mean, this would, this would only apply to the holders of a CUP or an AUP.
Right.
And they, I would just say they must allow inspections by any enforcement official at any time during business hours. Refusal to allow an inspection shall be grounded to revoke the permit.
Revoked immediately.
Well, I don't, I don't know about immediate, now you're really draconian. It would be grounds for revocation. And by the way, do we have suspension as a possible step or does it just go straight to revocation?
You know, revocation is this process we have for all permits. We don't have a separate suspension provision. State licenses can be suspended, but then we'd have to create a whole new process if we were going to have that. So, I mean, they can reapply after a revocation, but we don't have that as part of our process.
Right.
And then there'd be an argument, if we provide a suspension process here, that we'd have to provide it for all the other circumstances that we issue AUPs for.
So I fully agree with Commissioner Wooster's.
But we're in the CUPs also.
Right.
But none of the permit types that we have really has a provision for suspension. It's either you're conforming or you're not. And if you're not, then you get revoked.
On this one two oh, this new approach, if there's some reason, legitimate reason, the person didn't allow entry because, I don't know, they were sick or they were out of state or some crazy thing. We're not saying it's a some reason.
They would go through a revocation hearing process. And if there's a legitimate reason, you as the hearing body for the revocation permit would be able to make that determination.
Summary, summary abatement is covered in eight point oh six, which is incorporated by reference into this provision. But the requirement under law to be a constitutional summary abatement is that there has to be some sort of imminent risk to the public or the environment that you can't wait for an inspection warrant.
Are you saying that what Commissioner Wooster was suggesting is not?
No, I, he was, but he was not suggesting summary abatement.
No, 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 but that during office hours, they shall permit an inspection.
That's fine.
Yeah, I just, I'd add that to this.
And I agree with that. Just to make sure.
Right. Okay. Any other comments on that one?
Nice call.
Yeah, it was very good. One three zero, summary abatement.
No problem.
No comment here.
One four zero, administrative fines.
No comment.
Karen, there's your thousand dollars a day. Okay. One five zero, enforcement costs.
No comment from me.
No problem.
One six zero, fees. Whoop, go back, go back.
Why do we say solely? Why is the word solely responsible?
Where are we?
For the owners, this is one fifty A, the first line, owner of a parcel.
We were trying to make sure we got paid by, in that we have designated the owner as the person who's responsible. That doesn't prevent an owner from separately, through their own agreement with their tenant, trying to get indemnification. But we just didn't want to have a situation where it says either or and then neither one is paying the county because they're fighting about who should be responsible.
Typically, the parcel's what gets the lean anyway.
So.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just questioning.
I like questions with quick answers.
I mean, we could get rid of solely and just have it be as is, shall be responsible.
I think Mr. Bocelli's point is well taken.
Yeah, because I think perhaps you're going to have, you might be able to collect more easily from the operator.
Well, the operator may have a lot more money.
Yes.
Okay, so.
Just strike out solely.
We're going to try, that's one, two, three, four votes, right, five? Okay. Okay, under fees.
No problem.
Now we're getting into just template information and not, does anybody have anything further on any of these pages?
There's just a couple of typos. And the findings, finding I. Start off children, I would think, we want to say minors with an S. And this is not a typo, this is the finding L, what we dealt with the other day with the ban ordinance, that we took out the, everything after the first sentence.
Right.
And finding N, finding N. Down in the line that starts establishment or operation of A, commercial businesses, take the ES off the N. Oh, and finding R. When I read it, it sounded as if we were not allowing any new medical cannabis dispensaries. If you really read it carefully, it seems a little strange. I mean, it seems that what was meant to be said there was, we're not going to expand the permitting possibilities. And that's the language I would suggest we use. So we say, will not change the permitting requirements nor expand permitting possibilities.
Well, actually, we did recommend changing the permitting requirements.
Well, oh, you're right, okay. I wasn't thinking about the hours that we've spent here today.
You weren't thinking.
Wasn't thinking. What I was concerned about is that the language looks as if it's saying, no new dispensaries. I know that wasn't your intent. And if you want to correct that in some way, that makes sense.
I did not hear what Commissioner Wooster said.
We did.
But the phrase, "will not change the permitting requirements," is not, no longer accurate.
Right.
And I didn't read the rest of that as not allowing any new dispensaries. It says, "then may already be permitted."
I'm already, I mean, I understand the meaning that was intended and I agree with that meaning. I just think that it could be misread as saying, no new, no new dispensaries.
Not because we're saying it was allowed.
Nobody else has that problem?
I don't.
Well, all right, I'll give you, you're right.
I have that problem.
So I would maybe suggest that we, strike will not change and add restrict, restrict the permitting requirements because we've tightened them up.
Yeah, right.
And then.
And does not allow, instead of nor allow?
Yeah. Nobody else sees any other problem that I, the problem that I see, it's fine. It just, it just sounds like you're not allowing any new or expanded medical cannabis dispensaries. And then you get into "then may already be permitted," which means you're not expanding.
Why don't you take out the word already?
Yeah, yeah.
Then may be permitted, that does it.
That helps.
Okay.
Okay.
Maybe change "then" to "that."
Yeah, that. Either one works, kind of not.
That "that may be permitted." That.
Wait with me.
Okay.
I can't get too worried about this.
So... We've done all our edits. And I just wanna throw one thing out there under Prop sixty-four with the recreational. It's gonna be legal in the state of California. We're not gonna get away from it. A lot of these people will most likely just go get a medical card to be able to purchase and pay double tax, which is fine. We have an excise tax as well as a state tax that could be collected because they're gonna use it whether you want them to or not and whether I want them to or not. We are looking at banning it all in this county, needing funds for enforcement of it. Do you want to keep it just strictly medicinal or do you wanna consider recreational?
And when does the recreational go into effect?
January.
This January? Oh, I thought I heard.
I think.
My only concern is under Prop sixty-four. I know, I, I don't even know what the right answers are anymore. I'm worried about enforcement. I'll be honest with you. So we have dispensaries. We have cannabis. They're gonna pay fifty to three hundred dollars for a medical card to go get it. Or they're gonna start growing it in everybody's backyard.
Not in the backyard.
Not in your backyard?
Well, no. If we're gonna have compliance, it's not gonna be in the backyard.
We put it indoors. Thank you for that. I'm just asking. We can leave it completely alone. I'm happy either way. I just wanna put it out there.
I really think we should stick with.
Medicinal.
Keeping it medicinal.
Got it.
If the, if the board of supervisors wants to change that, that would be an interesting day and also.
Yeah, it would.
I, I don't, I just don't think this is the time or place to.
Okay.
Be expanding that.
I'm good with that. Everybody else? Good, good, good? Okay, then, do we want to take a vote and a motion on seventeen point nine one as edited and recommend that the board of supervisors look at our changes?
First, I wanna ask, is it clear to you what our directions are?
I'd leave, so if you don't mind, let me just sort of go over the, the changes that we've made. We've modified the sensitive use definition to include, I think this is probably the biggest change, the definition from the existing ordinance. In addition, we are adding, um, school bus stops and preschools and licensed daycare facilities. And I'll verify that that's the appropriate term to cult, to gather all of the daycare facilities that are out there. We, uh, oh four oh F, we restricted it to indoor cultivation of four hundred square feet, maximum. And that would, in order to do that, we've stricken the type two A, three A, and five A.
Did we clarify no offsite? I, I just.
Well, that would be a separate license under a separate permit under seventeen ninety-five.
Okay, just making sure it's clarified, okay.
So this is just talking about what occurs on the parcel. We, we changed parcel, we kept the word parcel in there. So it's the, um, and then we also will add a provision to ensure that there's filtration, air filtration, so that the odors don't escape the building. We are going to require a conditional use permit for any new,
Location.
New locations, and there's a maximum cap of five dispensaries in the county.
And you also added oh four oh G, the no ag oper.
Yes, yes, we added G, which was a language that Julie suggested. Let's see, we substituted oh five oh D with the language recommended by the sheriff. And we modified F, so it's clear by sort of reversing the order of that statement. We agreed that deliveries would be okay, so the ordinance is essentially silent on that since that's the default position. Five oh M. We're gonna add the old language regarding, um, interstate commerce from the previous ordinance to oh seven oh. Substitute new provision under oh seven oh. And we were adding a section under the right of entry and inspection that, that's subject to revocation if they refuse inspection. There are a few other minor corrections that we made.
That can be part of one of the, the existing sections.
I think we just add that to that section there, right, yeah. And then there are just a few other, um, language changes that we agreed to.
On oh eight oh, we added the planning department?
Yeah.
Like that?
Yes.
Okay.
And oh nine oh, you crossed out those other licenses.
Oh nine oh A, we just cross it. They always just go through them. We struck a portion of from one ten E. We struck solely from one five oh A. And we did the type of corrections to the various findings as well as struck the provision at, um, under L.
And it does, since you have the findings attached to our resolution, those need to be corrected also.
Thanks for reminding me of that. And then finally, R, we wordsmithed that a bit.
Right. Okay. Can I get a motion to approve as amended?
Also move.
I would, I wanna just, Karen, it looks like you had something to say. Okay, so we have a first and a second. All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, who was the second? I'm sorry.
Oh, I, I started the second.
Commissioner Pacelli.
And who was the first?
No, he made the motion.
Oh, he made the motion. He made the second. Sorry.
Before we wrap it up here, I just, I think maybe in presenting this board, we have to make, presenting this to the board, we have to make it clear that, um, if the board goes for the, the, uh, regulation alternative that we suggested the other day, that we suggested as an alternative, that it still could look to the provisions of the proposed ban ordinance for the provisions, the county, this county's version of what the personal growth can be. You know, that's, I didn't wanna say, it's either this or this when there's the provisions for the personal growth that, uh, that we've hatched through.
Well, we, if, if the board's direction is to, um, go with the regulatory ordinance, we will need to craft that ordinance. I mean, we have basically sort of a bullet list of provisions that you have suggested should be in in a regulatory ordinance if that's the direction they go.
Uh, so under Prop sixty-four, I think, if I can help him try to say what he's saying, is that we had, basically under Prop sixty-four, we're only allowing six plants indoors in any residential neighborhoods. But if they were to pass regulatory, they could do outside plants in the commercially designated zones.
Well, no.
Correct? That would be wiped out.
What I am, what I am saying is that the, we have, we have crafted as part of the ban ordinance what we had to permit, which was the personal growth of six plants and that sort of thing. That if the regulatory ordinance is chosen, that is a play, the, those provisions are a source of what we have already decided, uh, the.
I, I think I understand that, that should the regulatory ordinance be.
Could you repeat that? Because we're not getting it.
That the personal use, uh, personal cultivation of six plants, if it's allowed, if, if commercial cultivation's allowed the provisions of indoor cultivation only for your personal use six plants would be a part of that, yeah.
Oh, okay.
That was very well put.
Thank you.
Oh, Tim and I are thinking alike. That's, that's scary thought.
We're thinking alike, just speaking clearly.
I'm sorry for you guys. Okay, so I think that we are wrapping it up here today. Sorry, I was in a foul mood, but I do have an issue that I just wanna address. This has been a very difficult scenario. We've been dealing with it for two years, some of us here. The county's been dealing with it for two years. I really hope that we can get some resolve in this county and bring our county back together. I want you to know that it is, um, very difficult to continue to sit here. I have contemplated resigning. I'm just gonna be very clear about this. Getting threats via email, having my car damaged, has not been pleasant. It goes across the line. And we are not here representing the left side or the right side of this room. We represent forty-four thousand people in Calaveras County. So whether you get your way or not, I'm sorry. I don't get my way either, as you can see people vote, and we don't always agree. But to disrespect people that are serving this county, and I get paid as much, well, no, actually, I get paid more now. I'm cheering. I get twenty-five dollars a meeting more. But I, I looked at my paycheck year to date this year. The damage to my car is more than my paycheck, about three thousand dollars. That's what I've gotten to sit here all year. So I am asking you, I am begging you and the public to have some respect for each other. It is beyond ridiculous how much we are disrespecting each other. I am sorry for giving this lecture, but I think it's necessary. I think Commissioner Sisk would probably like to weigh in as well because she has had an experience. Last year, there were two commissioners that had a horrible experience to their vehicles. If that is what is acceptable to everybody in this county, we have a real problem. I think we can set a higher standard for ourselves in respecting each other. And I, I'm sorry, I was in a very foul mood today. I was very rude to many people. My apologies. But I'm still boiling over, over all the emails this weekend and my car damage. So I apologize to all of you that I was rude to. Karen, do you wanna talk about your experience?
I don't know who did it. I don't know what side it was on. Someone left a dead rat in my truck. So this is the kind of stuff we are experiencing. We're getting emails. We're getting threats. It's, when you have to leave here or leave a meeting and watch your back, I don't go anywhere anymore with my grandchildren because I'm afraid somebody's gonna do something to me in the presence of my children. It's unacceptable.
We do have restraining order provisions, which our office is more than happy to litigate if necessary on behalf of anybody who's working for the county.
And I'd just like, on a, I fully agree with everything you've just said, but on a positive note of an example of how things can be in advocacy in this county, I'd wanna commend Bill McManus the other day for his statement about the dispensary. It was a very clear and forceful statement with no threat of, of, uh, litigation, no threat of toss you nasty people out or anything else if you don't go along with it. And I think we, we need to look at what, what are the examples? And here's, here's a leader of one side who I think is providing a great example, and I thank you very much.
In one aspect, and I'm sorry, I have to address this because he may have done it at one point, but in another point during the two days, he threatens to unelect your officials. He has that right. That's his public right. And I also can be removed. It would only take three votes to go to the supervisors and do it. I don't have a problem with that. So anyway, I'm done, and meeting is adjourned.